...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll take a moment of silence real quick. All right, let's go ahead and call this order. And everybody's got the packet from the minute of last meeting correct? Read over everything from the last minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I approve we approve the minutes.
Okay. Second? On favor?
Aye.
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 That is approved. And the only question, do we need to approve the other minute for our special meeting?
Oh.
And that's also...
That's a good question.
The one that in the morning?
This was the special session?
Yeah, from April 16th.
Well, I guess they're both special sessions.
Yeah, that is all that. We're good to go. All right, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and call up Chief Gibbons, Fire Department.
How are you all this evening? So, month of April, we responded to 107 calls, down about 80 from the month before, so it was a nice little break. We're about one month away from completing the EMT course here in Mountain Grove, and all the students are doing great. They're getting now to where they can start scheduling their ride time on the ambulance, get some experienced hands-on with the actually running calls and being watched by paramedic and a licensed EMT to make sure they know the skills, they know what they're supposed to be doing. First part of this month, we actually were contacted to help lead out the high school archery team going to state, so we did that. It was very warmly received, so like support in the community there. Been in contact with the sales rep about the cardiac monitors I talked about last month. He's given me some rough numbers, but you know, it's nothing I really want to go forward with right now, so. With EMT class wrapping up in a month, I'm looking at scheduling a fire instructor one and a fire officer one course coming up before probably fall, maybe July or August, sometime in there. It's typically only a week class, and then they submit all their stuff online and take the written test. That's going to help me out a lot because then I won't be the only instructor, and I can let them teach and just kind of oversee stuff. And it'll also help out with our ISO audit when that comes back around. Let's see, I'm also looking at sending a couple more firefighters to the child safety seat course because currently I'm the only one certified in that. But it's a good class. With us being listed as a fitting station with the state, we actually receive a grant for car seats, so we get free car seats whenever we order them, whenever that time rolls around. We actually just got another load in, so we've got lots of car seats, so we're going to start advertising that again because people need seats, they need safe seats, and you know, I just, I want to make sure everybody's safe. So, other than that, that has pretty much been our April.
How many EMTs are you going through in your class right now currently?
We started with 12 or 13. We've had a couple that had to drop for, you know, busyness schedule-wise, they couldn't make it to the classes. I think we're at eight, eight or nine in the class right now, and all but two of those are from here in Mountain Grove, so.
And the other question, on your instructor classes that you're going to put on, are those going to be just for the firehouse, or are you going to open it up to other local departments?
I mean, I may, if I open it up to other departments with me teaching and supplying books and stuff, probably, there will be a fee for it for the outside departments. But, I mean, as far as that goes, it's still up in the air. I mean, we've got a handful of people that qualify for the instructor and the officer, so I think in order to have a good class size, you know, I think it would be beneficial to open it up to outside agencies.
What are the qualifications that they have to have prior?
So, for instructor one, they have to have the fire one and two certification. They have three years on their department or a letter from the chief. For officer one, they have to have fire one and two and instructor one, so it's just kind of building it from the ground up. So, instructor one's the starting point, and then it goes officer, and then those type of certifications you need to get, other certifications like incident safety officer, you have to have officer one for some of the years before oral letter from your chief. But, I mean, it's one of those things that you have to have years of experience behind you, they don't want just anybody, you know.
Because yours, all of your stuff is state certified, correct?
Correct. Yep. So.
Anybody? No other questions, Chief?
All right.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Next one up is going to be Chief Bloodsoe from the Police Department.
How are you? Good. This month, our calls were down a little bit. They were down to 717 calls for the month, and they've been down the last couple months, and it truly made me question some things, and with how maybe the record's been kept. So, we had budgeted to purchase computer aided dispatching for the department and finally got that done. And in the last, we had it 10 days prior to the end of the month in April, and we had nearly 300 calls then. So, it does have me concerned that our calls aren't being properly documented through 911. So, I'm curious to see how that turns out because we're already, for the first 12 days, we're sitting at almost 300 calls again for this month, so.
That's for our new system.
What's that?
That's using the new system.
Yes. Yes. So.
That's a document and everything.
So, like I said, you know, the next few months, that's going to tell if our numbers are accurate or not, so. We do have a new hire that was, he just graduated the academy last week, Robert Pepke. He'd actually worked for the golf course while he was going through the academy, and he's since graduated and has hit the road already. He started FTO, I believe he grad, he got his post number last Saturday, and he's been in training starting, it's been almost two weeks now, so hopefully, which, to be honest, I'm really excited because we've been down for almost a year, and our last one will graduate next month, so we will be a full staff. Knock on wood. So, during those 717 calls, we did execute two search warrants, one outside in the county, one inside the city. Both those were for drugs. That was with our SOG team that executed the warrants. Both those warrants come through the task force. Right now, we are currently seeking new membership for our team. We've got a couple new guys that are interested in joining. They do have to have, they have to be off probation though before they can join, and it's a four-week course for them to get certified through that team. I can't hardly believe it, but we received a grant. Grants have been pretty hard to get, but we just received a $9,000 grant for equipment for the guys, so I'm pretty excited about that, some good safety equipment.
Do you guys have an idea of what you're going to use that money for?
Yes, they're getting new high-visibility parkas, high-visibility vests for traffic, as well as new flashlights. So, I've been here 28 years, and we've never supplied flashlights, and this will be the first time, so I'm excited about that.
But the guys have them.
Yep. But guys, that's all I have for the month, so. Yes, ma'am.
Have you been given, I guess you haven't because it's not on the report. Warnings or anything for people using their cell phones as they drive, which that...
So, it's not a primary offense, so even though I see them doing it, I can't just stop them for that unless I believe that they're under the age of 18, so.
Is that like the old seatbelt?
Yes, it's a secondary offense, so. I did inquire though, through our legislation, if we could, as a city, make that a primary, and the way that the statute is written, cannot.
Okay.
So. What's that?
We can't supersede the state.
No. Seatbelts and stuff like that you can, but this one, they said absolutely not. So.
I had a question from the constituent that was asking, and I don't know if this falls upon you, grass clippings in the yards, is that something you guys enforce, and we start enforcing it?
Grass clippings in the yard?
Or, sorry, excuse me, in the road?
In the road?
Yeah.
We do enforce that.
We do enforce that.
Yes.
So, all they have to do is just get a hold of...
Yeah.
Okay. That answers that for them. Thank you, sir. Anything else?
I do have one thing, Danny.
Yes, sir.
Can you take a look at 13th and Lori?
Yes.
I know it's a continual problem there.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
High weeds.
Yes.
Could you get somebody to follow up on that?
Yes. It may be on our list already, I'm not sure. I should have checked it before I've come upstairs.
I should have said something to you earlier, I didn't say it.
So, but I know, I think we've written probably 30 letters in the last seven days, so.
I don't know what the answer to that is, but I'm looking into it.
Okay.
Because that's a silly state law.
Yeah.
Okay.
What about the working into cars? I've heard that there is a crowd that is working into cars and touching personal possessions.
Yes. Yeah, I actually, I'd received a phone call, I really can't go into a whole lot of it, but I know that the FBI is also involved in that. I've got some contact numbers that are helping us with that. I do know the one that was here has been identified, and warrants have been issued, so.
Is that a localized area, or is it citywide?
No, it's actually anywhere, actually, they're going all over, you know, ballparks and stuff like that, and just getting to people's cars.
Oh, okay.
It goes all the way down into Arkansas, and so it's, like I said.
Anybody got any questions for them? All right, Danny, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we got the senior center report, and that's going to be by the city court, which she's not here at this time, so it doesn't take over.
Before she gives the report, Mayor, could I make just one little plug for our senior center?
Go ahead.
I volunteer there on Fridays. My main reason for doing it on Friday is because David Richardson's band plays, and they dance, and I love music. But I would really encourage any member of our city council to volunteer because it, I get thanked, like I have been doing something just tremendous when I go out there. I set up the brake cart, and I wrap silverware in and out, and just help them out when I can. You know, it's no big deal. It sure doesn't take a waitress to be able to do it, because I've never been a waitress. But I think that it makes a good presence for the city, for us to help out like that.
I know they appreciate it.
Yep. And volunteer just...
And I enjoy it. It's fun.
Yeah.
Good to hear.
Okay. This is the home and frozen meals, and in the dining room, there were 60-plus, eight, those 1,892 meals. Under 60 was 43 home-delivered freezer meals. It was 3,192 with a total monthly meal of 5,127.
I think it's up a little bit, ain't it?
I think we talked, we were talking the other day, and they did say the number was kind of actually going up.
That's beating a lot of people.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
All right, next we will go to the citizens advisory report. Do we have anybody to speak on that?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, step up, please.
We actually did not meet last Monday because we didn't hear back from anybody, so just, again, to touch base on, we will need somebody from the council to appoint it. We will need somebody from the council appointed to direct us. Again, I know Jamie's back, you did that before. I don't know if that's something that you plan on picking back up, or if it will be somebody else. Have you discussed that?
We haven't discussed it yet because I just got sworn in today, so I didn't do too much council work just to stay within the appropriate parameters, but I'm happy to do it and step in that again unless somebody else feels called to do it. I'm happy to do it.
I think everybody's just kind of saying, you can have it.
All right, so, good. So, yeah, so we are in contact, so I can touch base, and is Preston still doing the...
He still delivers and does the minutes, yes.
All right, perfect, so I'll reach out to him and give some direction for the next meeting.
Great. Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you very much. All right, now we were going to move to the public comments, and I see we have Ms. Judy Stigall, if you'd step up and...
I want to talk about the 13th street because that's where I live, and the streets, they finally patched in front of the house and got some of the potholes. The whole street's not done yet, but anyway, the buses go too fast down there sometimes, and the drivers go too fast. We need to put a speed limits sign up on our street.
Is there not one up there on 13th?
No.
No, I think we have a lot that says it's 25 anywhere that is not posted.
Yeah.
Or 30, 30 anywhere that's not posted. So, we would, if you want to regulate it at something other than 30, we'd need to pass an ordinance and then put the sign up.
Okay.
It's up to council.
And why did you say that they were not, why don't you have any funding for the roads?
I'm sorry, what?
I said, why do you guys not have any funding for the roads?
Signs?
Funding.
Oh, funding, well, I don't know. That's a real good question. I don't know that there's an easy answer that I can give you, Judy. We have a absent sales tax to fund streets, and it's not enough money to pay for all the needs that we have. And streets have deteriorated over a long number of years. I don't know that there's any one council, or any one street department, or any one administrator, I mean, we're all a part of it, and the ones that we had in the past are a part of it, the same as we are now. We didn't put enough money in them, and it's caught up to us. I mean, that's just flat truth. Now, we're...
And Judy, go ahead, but I'll tell you something you're not going to want to hear.
What?
13th was slated for an overlay.
I know.
And they tried to get an easement to move the water and the sewer lines out from underneath the street, and the majority of your neighborhood didn't want to do that.
I just heard that there was three that objected.
Yeah, I don't know, but if they can't get a full, and to overlay a street and then have to go back, you know, anytime and dig it up to put the fixing water or sewer problem, you're just kind of throwing money away.
But doesn't the city own part of the street?
Yeah, but they don't go and want enough easement to move the water and stuff out.
Oh, they don't?
Let me, I'm going to address that in my administration report. If you want to stick around, we're going to talk about it later, but we're not totally out of the woods yet. But he's right.
Yeah, I heard.
We didn't have enough cooperation to go forward with a grant, and we missed that opportunity for that grant because we didn't have enough cooperation. So, that doesn't mean grants won't come back around, and we'll get another shot at it. And then I want to discuss with the council an alternative later to maybe being able to do something there.
Because I do see people pulling over because there's not enough room, too, you know.
Well, I think they're dodging potholes more than...
Well, that, too, it was pretty bad.
I got the bus this morning on it, and we didn't have any trouble.
Try riding a three-wheel bicycle down those potholes.
Well, I'm sure that's terrible, but I won't be riding a bicycle anywhere.
Well, I've got congestive heart failure, so I have to.
Well, I'm sorry, and that is good for you, but, yeah, I understand what you're saying. But I truly do think people are going around patches and potholes and just, it's not in very good condition.
No.
We know that, and we want to do something about it, but we just can't, every time there's a problem, we just can't write a check and it go away because we have problems all over town, you know, that, and a lot of them need to be addressed. That's one of the worst, and we acknowledge that, but we're going to talk about it.
It's one of the worst streets right now.
It is. No question.
You know.
And we did try, didn't we? And we were so disappointed, we couldn't believe that they didn't feel the same way that we did about these streets.
Well, you know, one of your ex-council members told me that who they were and all, but, you know, I had no objection, and I live on the street.
I think the biggest thing is we have to 100 percent...
Huh?
I think the biggest thing is we have to have 100 percent cooperation.
Oh, you do?
And that's where we're at right now.
And you, and they don't, you don't own, like he said, that you don't...
We own the street.
Yeah.
It's questionable about how much else we own. We're going to discuss that very thing early on.
Okay, that's what I wondered, too. And what she talked about, the senior citizens, I have, you know, I go there every day that I can, and years ago, Bonnie Maxwell, one of our teachers, walked for funding, you know, to get funding for meals on wheels, and that was hot meals, not the cold meals, and I've heard so many of the seniors that will not eat them, and they can't, you know, if they're unable to cook and do things physically, then the oven and all of that, they're not capable of doing either.
Well, Judy, let me tell you, I'm just, I have the beauty, like I told the mayor, I have the beauty of being able to tell you the absolute truth, whether you want to hear it or not, because I'm temporary. So, they can fire me, and I go home. But here's the problem, here's the deal. We get funded a considerable amount of money from the state for our meals. In order to get those meals, we have to do certain things in order to get that funding. We have to buy our groceries from them, and we have to sell their frozen meals instead of taking around the hot meals that we use to make...
I'm wondering what did happen.
It's not because we don't want to or didn't want to, it's because they changed their rules and said, if you want this 90-plus thousand dollars a year to help fund this facility, then you're going to have to sell them frozen meals.
Well, see, the seniors used to, when I went before, they would have auctions and all kinds of stuff to raise money to do different things. But that, you know, I know years ago, when they had them, they didn't have to go through all of that, they could do the hot meals.
Well, we appreciated all that effort.
Yeah, I know.
But it's just not guaranteed income, and we need the guaranteed income to be able to cook the meals and serve them in the place, and then to serve those frozen ones to take home that we get. And I know it's not the same with our food.
Well, my mother won't eat them, and she's 100... Well, my mother won't eat them, and she's a hundred. And I don't know how many told me that they sent them back because they were nasty.
Well...
You know, but that's private opinions, too.
Well, I understand, and I've heard the same things.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, we wouldn't have a senior center operation without their help. And it's a big financial help. And we just can't, we don't have any choice.
What is it, South, Southwest something?
Yeah, you're asking me something I can't remember without looking it up. But, no, no, it's not, no, it's a...
Southwest is on aging.
On aging, yeah. There you go. Thank you.
Here's...
They just cornered the market. And I don't blame them. If we were running it, we'd do the same thing. They cornered the market on them being financially successful.
On what?
On them being financially successful.
Yeah.
And the rest of us have got a scrape to make it work.
Right.
And, I mean, that's just, that's just plain truth.
What got my attention on it was I didn't agree with one thing that I seen happen in the center, too. A volunteer was asked to take meals to the golf course.
As to what?
To the golf course.
Who took them?
Huh?
Who took them?
Well, one of the volunteers that, you know, and, you know, if, if we have to drive there and get them, you know, they, we couldn't call and say, "Hey, bring them to our house", you know?
Well, actually, actually, you can.
You can?
Actually, you can.
No, no, I...
I'll do it.
No, I'd ask.
Well, if you can find somebody that volunteered to do it, that's the volunteer.
Well, I know, but she was supposed to be working in the center, not going out to the golf course delivering meals.
Volunteers don't go to the city. They're volunteering their time free of charge.
I know that. I know that.
I see what she's saying. We send, we deliver the freezer meals.
Yes.
Yes.
She's asking, "Why can't we deliver a fresh hot meal?" Well, it's something we need to look at, but without volunteers, we couldn't do it.
Well, there's not as many as there used to be, too.
Well...
You know, that's why, that's why she's probably volunteering right now, too, huh, Bren?
They need help.
Huh?
They need help.
Yeah, they do.
And it's a wonderful thing for the seniors to come because it's probably enough food served to them that they take it home in a little box later.
Yeah.
And they have supper out of it, too.
They do.
Well, and you know, there's four or five thousand meals being served a month that probably people wouldn't eat that meal if we didn't do it.
Well, there's businesses now that go in there and volunteer, you know, and pay for it. And the first time I've ever seen them run out of food, you know, because it was a free meal to the people.
Yeah, yeah. That is a good thing. Well...
Anyway, that's what I had to discuss.
Thank you, Judy, for your time. We'll look into it some others up. All right, we are going to move on to old business.
Wait a minute, anybody else in the booth?
Yeah, is anybody else, sorry about that. Does anybody else have a sign? Nobody will sign it? Okay, we are good. All right, we'll go to old business and the use tax report, and that'll be by Alderman Davis.
So I don't really have a report. Basically, being on the agenda was to continue to have the use tax discussion and developing some type of program to be able to get use tax passed in our city and have the community be behind it and the business owners behind it. So...
Zach, you had some ideas on that, didn't you, to discuss?
Oh.
We were talking in conference about a video and stuff.
Yeah, we were just, yeah, talking some ideas of how to, I guess, how to market it and how to, yeah, make, make a video between us and different ones as to how to explain it as simple terms as we could to get everybody to think the same way that we do. And, you know, and the gist was, you know, years ago, I think probably when Rick was here, but before, we had, took out a property tax and went all sales tax. We were funded. And then as, then as brick and mortar stores slowly declined and online slowly inclines, that percentage goes down. So the gist in the simplest terms I can think about it is, it's just going to bring us back up to where we would be, say, if internet never existed and all that. The alternative that I, we don't want to get to is if, say, time goes on, we couldn't get to that, we may have to look at bringing the property tax back in because it's got to make up somewhere because that was kind of the deal at that time, how we did it. So the use tax would be the easiest to bring it back up to where it was the same as if all the, the sales tax would all be the same. Because the sales tax is just the same. It's just has a different name because it's buying online. So that was kind of the gist of it and bouncing all those ideas together to try to explain it in the most easiest way that we could all understand.
Yeah.
You know, the one thing, Zach, that I have seen when I've gone to any of the presentations that is encouraging people to vote for it in the community, the person that is doing the presentation really isn't cognizant of all the ins and outs of what you have to do and what it entails. We need someone to be able to do a presentation that absolutely knows the ins and outs of it.
Yeah, because I think there's a lot of misconception of what the tax is and what its purpose is.
I will say this. If you brought back, say, a personal property tax on a vehicle, in Mountain Grove, you'd be paying probably a hundred and fifty dollars, say, average for people with a vehicle. They'd have to spend fifteen thousand dollars in new purchases to replace that hundred and fifty dollars with that use tax. They think, they think it's going to cost them a lot of money. But a personal property tax or a property tax costs them a lot more than that use tax. And, and that's if it was a one-cent
Right.
use tax. So people are, people are just not understanding. And the only other suggestion I'd say is, you're going to hate me for this, but get a fireman to do your advertisement. I'm serious. You ever seen the fire department lose an election? I've never, I'm not ready. I worked for three cities. I never seen them lose yet.
It's like, no, they do.
Hey, guys, keep it easy. Poor Danny Backer.
Oh, he'd work, too. I mean, police and fire should be spokespersons out front.
Well, there are all of our best ideas and maybe have like different people do it, too, as we kind of hit all the different things. But that's a good perspective because you can look at it, wait, pay a lump sum, a hundred and fifty dollars or approximately at the end of the year, or you can pay it a dollar or two at a time, and it doesn't hurt as much if it's on yours or something.
That's a new spending above and beyond what you're already spending. Now, you do, you make a good living. You going to spend twenty thousand dollars more this year than you did last year in town?
No, you're going to spend less because the prices are up.
Nobody's going to spend more. That's my point. Nobody's going to. They're much better off of the use tax.
Well, this use tax is just on internet sales, correct?
That's it. And I, I can't believe that... I understand the chamber has their own policy on whether to get involved.
Yeah.
And they didn't want to get involved. But I would think that a person that owns a business, pays for the fire insurance on it and the utilities on it, employees in it, would be jumping all over this because all it's doing is making it a level playing field.
But that's why I said we need someone to do a presentation publicly
Policeman, aren't you?
That knows exactly what it entails.
Who is going to do it?
So that they give the straight up.
Yeah, yeah, they need to. Because this is misunderstood.
I think that's just the biggest problem.
Jamie wasn't here. You were gone at the last meeting, and that's what the board, our board basically discussed and brought back, was that our board, the CBA board, the system advisory board, is made up of mostly business owners here. And we said we would help streamline that as long as we understood the proper terms so we could advertise and get that.
Get businesses behind it, have logos, some consistent messaging, some videos.
It's really a disadvantage to a businessman over any other, over any internet business.
Dale's got a pretty good slogan pinned out here.
Here's just a brainstorming idea. It's called, "Invest in your hometown campaign."
Yeah. That's true.
And that's what we need. We basically need a campaign to educate. And I know we've tried things in the past. I know that Mark, you talked pretty much to that every time about the number of times that we've tried to get this messaging out there. And I think a lot of the feedback is that it felt like it was just coming from the city instead of community, like you advising Citizen Advisory Board and, you know, and how we present it.
And I've said it before, you know, whenever it was kind of a regional thing, whenever West Plains and Mountain View, Howe County and all them were running it, they all got the use tax passed because their chambers support them. And this is where the citizens fight. Because without the chamber support, it gives the appearance that we don't want the use tax here. You know, the businesses don't, don't want it.
Yeah.
So I think we'd have to have the chamber on board before.
And you know, before we can do any large projects like the pool and things like that, we are going to have to do infrastructure because we have some really bad issues that need to be...
Well, Thirteenth, we're here about it, so.
But either way, we need both. We still need to invest in our hometown, which is...
That's where you create a video, I think, with...
And there's, Bobby sent us some examples of videos and logo ideas and stuff like that, too. So there's a lot of things that already are pretty much out there that we can utilize pretty easily and not have to do like a whole video production. Pretty much just some informational videos. I think it would be really nice, though, to have some personalized representation of explaining it because we're a small-town community. That's how we oftentimes do all of our business, right? It's who we know, it's the relationships that we have. So I think to have multiple different ways that have the consistent messaging and something like a good slogan, to just really educate well. Because the big hurdle that we have is that if we haven't gotten to educate, and then look at the ballot, it is a structured way that has to be presented on the ballot, which is incredible. It's like word salad. It's, it's terrible. It's awful. I hate the way it reads, but we don't have any control over that.
But aren't there representatives from the state that would be able to come down and do a presentation for us?
I don't know that the citizens are going to listen to a representative. The citizens want to hear from themselves. They want to know from their businesses and people who run it.
And that's when they get word salad, as you put it, but it's not really good information then.
Well, it can be good information when somebody does their research. But they're going to want to hear from the people more than they are from, honestly, us or the state legislative. They want to know that their own people are backing it up.
I think another word I'm coming up with is care about our community. Care about it, and care. Education is one thing, but I don't think education moves the needle as much as caring about a cause. And our causes, our hometown, our Mountain Grove in general, you know, and if you want Mountain Grove to be here for fifty years, a hundred years, we got to have concrete. We have to have streets, sidewalks, and we have to have amenities. And we all like our parks. We like to play tennis and Lambeth Park and baseball. That's our amenities. It's all that in the bundle. We're here to give services to the community.
Shane, you said...
So we have to get our heart tied into it.
Yeah. You said you guys was already talking about this and on board with it.
Yes, I, I apologize. I think I said last meeting, but it was actually two meetings ago that we addressed this. That's why maybe it sounds unfamiliar. But yes, we, we had the same agreements as Jamie brought up, that it needed to be, the wording on the ballot is very difficult to understand. We want that wording to be out there for people to see it ahead of time and not to be afraid of it, but also to understand it, to educate people, to help them understand what it means and what it's going to bring to our community so everyone's on the same page. Because that's where we're at right now, is people don't understand it and they're uneducated about it. They're fearful about it. And everybody, you know, is resentful when they feel like they're being taken advantage of. So to, to help them understand that they're not getting a new tax at Walmart, it is only on an online purchase, you know, people aren't going to understand that unless we educate them. So having the same imaging, the same video and the same pamphlet, not changing it up between now and next, August, when it's on the ballot, and, you know, our businesses coming and putting it in their, in their storefronts, newspaper, getting the chamber on board. But everybody seeing the same advertisement for it for the next year is going to be really important.
So let me ask you this, then. Is that something you guys would like to spearhead?
We, we did agree that we would assist and take care of that.
Because you are the community, and that's, I mean, that's who they want to hear from.
Correct. Yes. And the only, the only thing that we wanted to be clear about was that we fully understood exactly what it all entailed. So if, if you guys want to delegate that to us, then we, we would do some research to make sure we understand that, bring it back and present it to you, and make sure that you guys agree before we get with Bobby and livestream it.
We gotta see what that sounds like. Yeah. There you go. Yes, sir.
My name's Tony Ferguson, and I'm also on the city advisory board. And what she has said, we had discussed a lot of things. And we did have a catchy slogan for that. But the problem is, I can't remember what that catchy slogan was. It was cute. And I was just going to throw that out there. And we did have some ideas on how to promote this to the community and stuff. And I don't know what happened with the notes and why that wasn't forwarded.
Well, that's, it's done past, but now we're on a good path. And I think you guys can do a great job of getting it out there and making people understand. Because again, it's not coming from anybody sitting behind here. It's from your local businesses, your local people that are really pushing for this. It's not those, oh, these elected officials. We all know how people feel about elected officials. I mean, that's just the world and how we...
I love them.
You love them. But if it comes from you guys, I really do think it stands a better chance. So...
It's still in there what they had written. I mean, I remember it being very informative. If we look back, it should still be attached to the...
There's two weeks ago.
Two months ago, I think.
The minutes are still in there. They should be.
Yeah. So we, we can still pull it up. Because I remember reading it. It was very, very important.
We send our, our agenda minutes to Jamie, and they, they get attached and sent to you guys when we do have a meeting.
So you'll be our liaison?
Yeah, I'll be the...
Sounds great. So I guess, so is that everybody's ideas right now? We're all agreeing on it?
Yeah, I'll get with Preston and also get a little bit more structure to it, direction as far as like picking logos and that kind of stuff. So because I know we had, you know, I'm like a month behind a little bit in where everything is at. So we'll get things reset and give you some direction moving forward about what to do at your next meeting. And then we can start putting things together. Because we need time
Yeah.
to do a lot of these things because it's not going to be on the ballot for a little bit, but we can't not start now.
Yep, you got eleven months. You got eleven months. That's all right.
And I don't like that.
We vote on it on the second Tuesday of April. So we got three months of brainstorming. We release our campaign in October.
Yeah.
All right, Ed, we're good to move on then? Very good? All right, we're going to next go to our administrator, and he's going to talk about the storm sirens.
Chief Gibbons told me we needed two storm sirens and let me know about funding that we could get. I contacted SCOCOG. I have to let them know tomorrow. If we want two storm sirens, it's going to cost us fifteen thousand. SCOCOG will pay for forty-five thousand. Well, they don't pay for it, but a grant pays for forty-five thousand. It's sixty thousand total for two, thirty thousand apiece. And so if we want to buy two of them for a total of fifteen grand from us, I got...
Buy sixty thousand worth of equipment for fifteen thousand.
Yeah. Well, we're paying sixty thousand for it. Forty-five thousand of it's a grant. Fifteen thousand has to come out of our pocket. But it's a good buy for two starts.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd move to buy two sirens.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, I'll...
One of us. Pick one.
Mark, what do you say?
Yes.
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 That's a, you made a good, good go.
Can't beat that with a stick.
No, I like it. All right, well, now that we're done with that, we'll go to the new business. And Mr. Administrator will be talking to us about the VFW property.
You all accepted taking the VFW building back, and, and then the VFW is going to use it for their meetings and things. I would like to ask you to allow me to have it, the property replanted, so that instead of an airport and then a small VFW lot, we have one lot all under airport. It does two things. It secures the water rights back to us, which we should have never gave up. And if we're going to own the building, we might as well have it planted correctly. And that's all I need, permission to do that.
I make a motion to do that.
Second.
All right, Mark?
Yep.
Yes.
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 I will get bids on that and bring it back to you before we actually spend any money. Because I don't want to be shocked, anybody or...
All right, next up, he's got the bid acceptance.
This is on your Bush Street project. You should have a thing in your packet, I hope, from... You should have a thing in your packet, I hope, from TOF. And Superior Asphalt was the lowest bid at seven hundred fifty-six thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars. And that will be paid for with a grant and with a hundred thousand dollar match from the city. And a gentleman was talking to me before the meeting. What are we doing for streets? Well, this hundred thousand's actually going into that Bush Street. But that just goes to show you how expensive it is to do those kind of projects because we're doing a hundred thousand and the grant's doing seven hundred fifty-six thousand in order to pull that project off. So, I just need to have the asphalt, Superior Asphalt approved as a low bidder.
Are we getting all four appendums? One, two, and three? One, two, C, and three?
One, two, and three. The base and alternates, one, two, and, wait a minute, one, two, C, and three.
And two, C means concrete, right?
Yeah, yeah. That was at the request of our street department. They want to see concrete in those intersections instead of asphalt because those big trucks will tear up the asphalt easier.
I am curious, Rick, did you have conversations with, with TOF as to why they recommended Superior? I mean, because the lowest two are pretty close together. I'm just curious if it's worth asking, but because it looks like they're from Michigan?
Well, it, I don't know that you can read that attachment very easily. And I can get you a better copy. I got one for Dale today because he was having trouble with it, too. But each one of the, not just the base bid was lower, but each one of the alternate bids was also lower. So, it ended up being like a hundred thousand dollars lower all.
Okay, well, we gotta talk.
Yeah.
Because which is good if they're paying the travel from Michigan, so they're doing really well.
Well, Bolivar.
Oh, it is, okay.
Superior Asphalt's at Bolivar, yeah.
Okay, okay, so I'm coming this far, okay.
So, the number's on B, that's not the total?
No, that, that's the total for the base bid, alternate, alternate one.
Yeah, one, two, C, and three.
Alternate two, C, and three.
Yes.
Doesn't count two A and two B. Those were eliminated.
Which are the ones?
They had to be eliminated because we couldn't afford it. And the engineers made the determination in order to do the project and the scope that you wanted it done, that the only way they could do it was one, two, C, and three along with the base bid. And still stay within the money. Unless you want to spend another hundred thousand, please tell me no.
Making the assumption that TOF had recommended and worked with them before.
Yes, yeah.
That's all good.
Yeah, and we'll have a construction meeting here on the, oh, shoot. Don't hold me to the date, nineteenth or twenty-sixth at ten o'clock in the morning. And they will go over every little detail with us and with our street guys and with the companies that, managers that are out there so we can guide traffic and every little detail be discussed.
So, we're taking a motion to further make the motion to go to Superior Asphalt. Can I go a second?
Second.
Mark?
Yep.
Yes.
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 All right, moving on. We, is Ralph out here, here? Nope, okay.
He, he wants a, they, they had a request to sell beer at the Heritage Festival at the A Squared Brewery.
And they've done it before, correct?
Yeah.
So.
But it has to be approved by the.
Well, yeah, yeah. There's a certain area, a little district.
Yeah, they do like a beer garden type thing where they.
So, you need that in motion?
Hmm?
I'll make a motion to let it.
Okay.
Go.
You make a motion, what, Mark?
Let him sell beer on the Harris Square.
Do I have a second? Dean Segues? Mark?
Yep.
Got it?
Yes.
Mark?
I'm thinking.
Okay, you can think.
Vote your art, just vote your art. You don't have to.
It doesn't, we have to do it every year, what you're saying.
Yeah.
They have done. Temporary for just Heritage Fest.
Last year was the first year, is that right?
No, I think it was three years.
Two years.
Yeah, last two years.
That happens to me all the time. And we've had, let's say, we've never really had any issues out of it. They're taking one little corner. Yeah, they are not allowed to carry out.
Beer sampling, liquor by the drink.
That's one of the thoughts.
Yeah.
What's that?
Is it just beer sampling?
Yeah, beer.
Yeah, just beer.
Just sampling.
No, no, they're.
No, it's actual beer.
Yeah, they buy it, but they have to stay in that garden and.
Oh, okay. Yeah, they can't walk around. They have to stay in the, you have to consume it and not.
And they will shut, catch you off if.
But open container on the square is not legal?
That's what they're asking for.
That's what we're restricting.
The city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, this is just for the festival of women?
Yeah.
And in that beer garden, they cannot leave that spot.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm not calm, and I'm a little icky, but. Yeah.
Yes.
Those will pass us. And I guess we'll just get ahold of him. All right, next is gonna be the fair board financial request.
They have requested fifty-five hundred dollars. Fifteen hundred for insurance for their truck pool and four thousand dollars for our part of the fireworks. Question, the question was asked of me, why didn't they request it when everybody else did? They weren't aware of the cutoff.
I make a motion to fund it.
Could we talk about this for just a minute, please?
What kind of question you got?
So, so someone mentioned earlier, too, thought the truck pool was part of Heritage Festival or a fundraiser for Heritage Festival.
It was.
But we done, we've done approve that a couple, our last meeting or meeting before.
Right, I know we did. So, I was wondering why all of Heritage Festival isn't, why they just didn't request everything that we need together.
Because it's a different, Heritage Festival is different from the fair. Fair board, their interest, they're not gonna have, from my understanding, they're not gonna have truck pool. There's, they're gonna have two-night rodeo.
Oh, no truck pool.
Yeah, the truck pool will be the Heritage Fest fundraiser.
Yeah, talking about fireworks, draft horse pool, mini-horse pool.
Oh, wait a minute, there is a mini-horse pool.
So, this, I think, is different.
When they called us, they said truck pool, but.
I'm seeing draft horse and mini-horse pool. I see nothing about truck pools on here.
I thought it was this way, getting this panel.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're talking about draft horse and mini-horse pool now.
Yeah.
And then on their, on their flyer, for when the fair occurs, they're gonna have rodeo Friday night, Saturday night. They're not, I didn't see any truck pool on that flyer.
Well.
Yeah, they talk about that rodeo's.
When they called in and asked us, it was different. They hadn't filled out the form yet. And when the form come in, it's changed.
The amount we're proving is, we're talking about the amount.
It's fifty-five hundred total.
Fifty-five hundred.
Our sheet, it says, the one says three thousand, six, forty-eight.
Or amount requested. Yeah, three, six, twelve.
Well, see, that was three, that was insurance. And they wanted us to pay half of it.
Half, okay.
And they told us originally that it was three thousand. Then when they turned the form in, it went up. So, their request to me was fifteen hundred for insurance, four thousand for fireworks.
On the page two.
I'll make a motion that we give them the fifty-five hundred.
Do I have a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, like, oh, seven, four thousand on the fireworks and three, six, four, eight, fifteen.
He's offering four thousand for fireworks and fifteen hundred for insurance.
We generally pay about that every year for fireworks, don't we?
No, I'm just trying to figure out.
Pay more now.
How you were coming up with that number. I'm not saying it, I'm kidding.
My, my thing is that, granted, I'm a, I'm a month out of the loop, but I feel like there's been lots of approving of these. And I feel like, do we have a cap on how many things that we're approving and how much we're approving?
I sure hope so.
Because I don't know what that is. And I feel like, sitting in this seat, I should probably know what that is because to continue to vote yes on these things and not no.
A cap as far as how many we fund or the amount that we're funding?
The total amount. Like, because I know it's gonna come in multiple different requests and different values. So, I'm thinking like, do we have like a budgeted amount of how much we have available?
We did initially, we said we were gonna do that on the next budget.
Yeah, the next budget here is gonna come around.
I'm shooting from the hip right now.
We've always budgeted for fireworks and it's budgeted in this current year's budget. And we've always had what was called mini-grids. And that's with our partnerships with like the Chamber, the YMCA, different ones like that. And then you all added a special events fund, which I'm gonna put under the same umbrella. I don't care what we call it.
Right.
But in the budget, it's gonna be under the same umbrella. So, that you'll have a list and we'll know what that amount is. Because you're absolutely right. It gets out of control real fast.
Yes.
If you don't put a cap on it. And this being the first year for the special events, you approved four or five different ones.
Yeah.
Three of them were in relationship to Heritage Festival. And one was movie night and one was a VFW amount. And, and then the one you just added tonight.
So, this will be the final one for this budget year? Because even though we're past the due date, we're making a special exception. But now we're, we're done.
Unless somebody's coming back to the days.
For this year? Okay, I just want a little bit more.
We need to fill it in.
About the approving, about spending the city's.
We're trying to be nice as far as.
Yeah, and that's also one that we've done prior to.
I think that once, once the budget document comes out, where you can see that list.
Yeah.
When you approve that, you're approving that for the next budget year. And that should be your cutoff right there when you approve it.
So, this first year is kind of like.
That doesn't mean you can't amend it because you can.
Yeah.
But I will tell you now, please don't amend it because you're just hurting yourself.
Yeah.
I won't, I won't be here, so you can do whatever you want, but.
So, essentially, we already have that fireworks, that four thousand piece.
Once, once you approve a budget, try your very best not to amend it because otherwise you'll get into crazy requests. That makes it hard for you to say no to.
So, Rick, will you give me the total amount again that you just said a little while ago that they wanted? Did you say?
Fifty-five hundred.
But.
Fifteen hundred of it towards insurance, four thousand towards fireworks.
The difference in the fifteen hundred and three thousand, six, forty-eight, they're gonna pay their selves, is what he's saying.
Oh, okay, because I was coming up with seven thousand, six, forty, fifteen.
Oh, hell no.
Well, that doesn't tell you. So, okay. Okay, thank you for being right there.
Second.
Second, okay. Mark, what do you say?
Yep.
Bill?
Yes.
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 Yes is the last one we're gonna do this year.
She's on record.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, this will pass us. All right, now we're gonna do the bid opening for the city property sale. And for the Dodge, Jeff Hyatt has bid three hundred dollars.
I don't think we all know what the.
Explain this. Did you, I think I.
Yeah.
We have, we had some old vehicles and a bunch of junk, metal, mainly metal, out the barn we're trying to get rid of. And we didn't have anybody bid on it originally, on the vehicle parts. And then this guy's come back and said, you know what? Wouldn't mind having that Dodge. And what, basically what our position has been, if we can get a bid of more than we'd get at junk, just taking that sort of junk, we're ready to get rid of stuff as soon as we can. I don't know, what do they get for junk cars now?
Around two hundred something dollars, roughly. So, I mean, this is a little more than what they would.
I know that we made it known to him that if it was less than what we could get junk, we're gonna turn him down.
Yeah.
So, that's the reason he's bid what he did. But we can, we can get junk for it or we can get three hundred dollars. I'd say get three hundred dollars.
It's always a push because when you factor our labor down, it'll go about short.
Yep.
Yeah.
Now, do I have anybody who would like to motion on that?
I make a motion to accept the opinion.
Okay, everybody got a second? Got a second? All right, Mark?
Yep.
Yes.
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 All right. All right, and all the junk cars, administrative report.
Oh, boy. Okay, I'll go through this as quickly as I can, folks. Feel free to call me anytime you want, come by and see me, whatever you want to do. I'll be happy to get in detail with you. Interviewed forty-three applicants out of forty-six that applied. Two of them didn't show up for their appointment and one of them didn't leave a telephone number anyway for us to get ahold of them. So, we did interview three out of the forty-six. We did interview forty-three. Of that, we have hired three people. Two of them are here and working. One of them's still giving a notice at her old job and will be here in about ten or eleven days. Met with TOF Engineering, just basically told them, look, lay it out for me, everything that you think you're doing for the city. And I said it that way because there are projects they are doing for the city and there are projects they'd like to do for the city that you haven't committed to yet. So, I needed to do that just to get a handle on where we were at and how much we were gonna have to spend. Because I didn't know how much we were gonna have to spend for some of these grants. Got a handle on that now and that'll be in the budget. City's annual audit, I think you've got a copy of that on your, on your thing. I just want to point out two or three little things. This was an unmodified or clean opinion and this means it's the best opinion you can receive. So, right off the bat, they're telling you that the city did a damn good job on the audit. They had one weakness, it was segregation of duties. I'm aware of that. I've told the girls effective this week, we will segregate those. We had to get somebody hired before we could segregate. In other words, they don't want somebody writing a check and then they have an ability to sign it. Okay, we have to have three signatures. We have the mayor and the mayor pro tem and a couple others that are available to sign. But we won't let anybody that's making out a check be on that, have an ability to sign a check. And that's what they were talking about. And that's what they were talking about, so we're gonna take, we've already taken care of that. The budgetary compliance, don't want us to budget anything knowing that it's gonna be over. And I don't have it in front of me, but you'll have, you have a copy of last year's budget, and I think what you saw was revenue for police and fire, one point four million, and then it showed how much the police and how much the fire, and that didn't add up to one point four million, added up to one point nine million. And they said, well, you can't do that. Now, they reconciled it, the auditors reconciled it, and I inquired as to why that was that way, and was told, well, we reconcile it. Well, you don't have to reconcile it if you do it right the first time, okay? So we're gonna do it right the first time this time, I'm gonna reflect the real numbers on both of those. And then they recommend that someone other than a bookkeeper receives and reviews the bank statements as we get them in, and our canceled checks. Review it, then turn it over to our bookkeeper, let them balance the checkbook, so to speak, then they give it back to the observer, which is probably gonna be the clerk, city clerk, to make sure that that was done correctly. Just so you got two sets of eyes on the books all the time. And that's it. It was a real clean report, one you ought to be happy with, and if you get confused with the budget we sent you, don't you worry a bit, we can explain it, everybody gets confused with it. It's not something that you just read every day, it's not like fun reading, but it's, it's a good report. Lake Lily, haven't gone very far because the weather had cooperated, they have started, it's just a process and we'll keep you up to date, but as soon as we get a little bit of weather where they can get in work several days in a row, it'll help. Bulldog project, I think I've got all the paperwork turned in now. And I think that those, that the grants closed out, I don't think we owe anymore. I do have the engineers checking that for me, it's supposed to let me know this week, but from what I can tell, I've got everything turned in the way it's supposed to be, and we're okay on that one. We, the mayor signed off on MoDOT connecting to their lift station, which was a part of the process and always been a part of the plan, but we don't have anything to do with that, other than accepting the sewage, MoDOT does their own, they have to do everything their own, theirself to get it on there. Bush Street, you, you approved the bid, you're up to date on that. Twentieth Street sewer project, we're still waiting on those two new manholes, that is gonna be paid by TOEF. They're the ones that made the mistake, so they're paying for those, as soon as we get them, we'll get them in, and that'll be done. Been working feverishly on the budget. It's a little different setup than I was used to, but once I figured it out, it's okay. But we're making headway, and I'll get you a, a copy as soon as I can, and then we'll set up a special meeting to review it, before we have to have a final, has to be finalized before July one for the state. I'm sure you know, it usually takes four or five months, and that's what Becky had done in the past, and so had Tim and me too before that, but I don't have four or five months, so please be patient, because we're, we're going ninety mile an hour, and just, we'll get it done. Met with the contractor on the downtown bathrooms, he's not gonna get started for a few weeks. He is gonna rebid this a little bit for me, no, he's not gonna rebid it, he's gonna reduce his bid some, because he's a little high on a couple of things. And when I asked him about it, he voluntarily said, I'll rework it, and it'll come in a little bit less for you. Now, one change that we made, it originally was supposed to be brick on all four sides, and really, folks, it's gonna be this far from the building behind it. I don't know why you need brick back there, there's no humans ever gonna see it. He wanted to know if we could go steel, said, well, be smart. It'll be brick or block or rock, something fancy, on the entire front. Wayne's coated up about four foot on each side, then metal, and then metal on the back, it's gonna save us about ten or twelve grand. And unless somebody has an objection to that, that's kind of the direction we're trying to go. We want it to be nice, it'll be attractive, but let's face it, when you're at the festival and you gotta go, you're not checking out the architecture, you're heading for the urinal, you know? So that's, that's probably what we do. Street repairs, I talked with Beau, he's, he's putting asphalt and patching holes right now. He's putting crack seal down to help preserve some of these streets. We wanna discuss some different alternatives, and Mark even got with me tonight about another alternative. We need to look at to try to preserve the streets as best as we can, the ones that can be. Some of them can't be, and, and we're in the process of identifying them, and I know that we had someone talking about, well, this lady, about Thirteenth Street. Let me tell you a novel idea here. I have to go to the courthouse and read some deeds, but I'm only saying this because I used to own a piece of property on that street. And my deed read that the easement's twenty-five foot from the center line of the street, which means there was about ten or fifteen foot of my lot that I thought was mine, it's a, it's an easement, and it was on both sides of the street. If that's the case, we already have enough easements, we don't need permission from anybody. If I can verify it, okay? Secondly, I'm not gonna say that widening isn't a good idea, because it is a good idea, but it's not a necessity. We could pave the existing street and save a lot of money, and if we have the easements already for the water sewer lines, we would have them already, we wouldn't have to pay anything, and we could resurrect this project. I'm just saying it's an option. I told the mayor, I'd like to identify a project in every ward, so that we're spending our money equally as we can. But now, every ward doesn't have a through street with hundreds of cars a day on it. Now, I'd love to have my cul-de-sac fixed, it hadn't been fixed in twenty-two years. However, it did get some asphalt in the pot, although, and I'm proud of that. But there's only four of us on it, and you can't justify it. I would never suggest that we redo that street. So people have to understand, if they're on a little short street, has no traffic, you really need to be patient with us, because, you know, we're not, we're not loaded, we just don't have limitless money. And so we're gonna end up bringing a couple of different projects in each ward to you to choose from. Notice how I'm pushing this off on you guys to make that decision. We'll do whatever you want us to do, but we're gonna show you what the need is, and then hopefully, we're gonna have an alternative to help preserve some of the streets that need something, but aren't terrible yet, which is most of our streets, okay? And there, I mean, the options are wide open, we just need to look at everything we can, and, you know, okay, I'll shut up now. Thank you.
So can I ask a few questions?
Sure.
How many positions do we have remaining to fill, or does those three appointments, or those three hires meet all the needs?
I have one more that I'd like to fill, and I have someone ready to fill it, but we need to talk in executive session later about personnel before I can do that.
Right, and then the status of the pool?
I don't have any status, I know they've met, and I haven't met with anybody yet, but, so I don't really know, we're gonna have to ask someone who went to that meeting.
In two weeks, we have a meeting on Monday?
It's next Monday.
Oh.
They have another one on the nineteenth.
Yeah, nineteen.
Yeah, one week, seven.
Here, at Tampa.
Nine.
Nine.
Right. Nine.
Nine.
We'll have to report back to you on that, because.
Sorry, I might be here for that meeting on the nineteenth, so I can help, and that was one of the things that I had asked to be on the, just for repetitive agenda, so that we can continue to have dialogue about the pool, where it's at, keep the community informed about what we're doing about the pool. Because even though I understand infrastructure is definitely our priority, the community still wants to know what's happening with the pool.
Sure.
We gotta do small steps, be able to get it done at some point in the future.
In the last meeting, we did determine where it would go in the future.
Where's it gonna go?
Yeah, we, we have the site picked out, which is a piece of property basically right around the Y.
Right. Water Street. Water Street.
Water Street.
And behind the.
It was the one recommended.
It'll, it'll butt up to Coral. That really is.
Oh, where the, yeah, where we had a well or something?
Yeah, the well's still there, it'll be south of the well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we did that off of recognition on the aquatics company that was giving us guidance and that, and the ones we need with, so, so, yeah, so I think that'll be good. And then a last point to just bring up, and this has been something kind of in the background, I also sit on the planning and zoning board, and right now, we have an overabundance of council members on that board, and according to what our ordinance is, of what the balance is supposed to be of council members and non-council members, so that's just something that's gonna need to be addressed.
Who, who all is on the zoning board?
Mark, me, and.
Okay.
Uh, Gene Carter, Danny, Danny Lathrum, uh. Dale Crandall.
Mayor always has the option to be on the board, but.
And the mayor.
Only supposed, he's on, but only one council member. And the reason it happened is Mark was on before he was on council.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what happened, is that shit happened, and so, yeah, so I think.
Do you have a term expiration date on your term?
On the, on the.
There's no terms, no planning.
I thought they, I thought I had a list someplace that came off the internet that said that it had the expiration date, expiration date for all the term.
Not on, not on planning and zoning, basically you're appointed by the mayor until you decide to step down or.
When your term term ends.
Well, it's the new mayor.
Four years, isn't it?
Yeah, when the new mayor comes in.
Yeah.
He, he'll have to appoint the council or the planning.
They only tell you that, did they? I didn't know that.
And I think, kind of, option wise that we have, because I don't believe any of the, like, what makes up the board, how many people on the board, like, that's all done by ordinance. Right? So if we decide that we wanna change the ordinance, as far as the number of people that we have on that board and how things are done, you know, that's one option that we have, but, yeah, so that'll be, that, I just wanted to bring that in the radar, because I know it's probably one of those things that with all the other priorities is someone in, you know, the backseat.
I have to be honest with you, it did not make my list.
Yeah. Well, it's been kind of talked about, it's like, we need to figure it out.
Do you have any openings on there, as far as, I mean, other than one?
I was thinking we were short already.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we are short, at least one.
Because I know somebody that's wanting to serve on there, so.
Okay.
We'll get with me there, we'll.
I didn't need to, I can't remember.
We want to. Yeah, you have to say, I can't remember how many's on there.
Well, we're on that topic, Preston had sent a message a few months ago, we are short three members for the citizens advisory board. We've had three members that were not able to attend the meetings, so we have three.
And you guys keep a regular meeting, right, it's the Monday.
First Monday before.
Before the city council meeting, so they need a week before we do, so they do have some regularity to the meetings. That's kind of one of the challenges about planning and zoning, is we may meet when we need to meet. So that doesn't always work with the reschedule, so they have the advantage of that, and we have some requirements as far as what you need to meet to be on the citizen advisory board, you like, you submit a application, and I know that's somewhere.
Somebody that fills.
In the documents.
Where can they go to fill an application?
The mayor.
Yep.
Thanks, guys.
I thought we got applications.
So I guess they can pick an application at, at city hall?
Yeah, yeah, those, those members are chosen or appointed by you.
Okay, and you need three slots filled?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll work on getting that, so anybody out there on YouTube land, you heard it.
Yeah.
I think we, I think.
So that was, that was on my, on my daily show right there, sorry about that. I think so, but right now, that's what, that's what I had, so.
All right, then, we're gonna move on to bills.
Okay, so we all got, listed the bills that I set up for you, from Dolores, and so see if you have any questions on those, and if you do, I'll document it.
What, what product was that?
What?
What product was that?
What product was mine, I don't know, but I'll find out.
I was curious. I knew we accepted a bill to pay a bill.
Five paracode tables, those were tables that were purchased by Tim Sparks for the parks.
Yeah.
Down there by the playground. We, we have possession of five new codes.
Like outdoor picnic tables?
Picnic tables, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure what it was.
Well, they were paracode painted as well.
Okay.
So, did you say you wanted to?
I knew we paid bills.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
You? I was second, Jamie?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Dean?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
True. All right, now, at this point in time.
I knew we were going to executive session.
Okay, Delmon, you want to pitch to Jamie?